Good evening. Welcome to our main meeting. Thank you all for coming. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Would you please stand and join me in the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please stand. I'm going to ask Ashley to say a word.
Please bow your heads. Most gracious heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together here this evening. Lord, it's great to see so many bright and shiny faces to be able to celebrate all the successes that have been going on here at Bastrop ISD. Lord, we ask that you would please be with this meeting. Please give us wisdom. And, Lord, please keep us safe while we're home with the weather tonight. And, Lord, we just want to thank you for all the blessings that you have given us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. We're going to now move and we're going to ask Judge Dugan to come forward. And I'll ask him, does he want to take this separate or do you want to take them all together?
I don't know if we do them separate.
Separate's great. Before we get going, what's going to happen is Judge Dugan's going to administer the oath of office to our trustees. As everybody knows, we didn't have an election this year. And as a board member, you either wonder if no one wants to get involved or if we're doing the right thing. So, we like to say that things are going in a good direction and that's why there wasn't an election. And I'll mention that it saved the district about thirteen thousand dollars. Did I say that?
More like twenty.
More like twenty. We'll go with that. Okay? Always, I was going to say ladies first, but it's not. It's going to be Dr. Mix.
All right. Dr. Mix, hand one over. Right here because your right hand, raise your right hand. I want everybody to see you, everyone will see me. Mr. Allen, I agree with you wholeheartedly. It's not that, I thought, when they called up election, nobody wants the job? No. It's just there's three very good people that have the job already.
Agreed.
Me being unopposed to November, I'm taking the same thing.
There you go.
All right. Repeat after me. I, Matthew Mix, do solemnly swear, and I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Bastrop ISD Board of Trustees, place six, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
Welcome back, Dr. Mix.
Yeah.
Nancy told me to tell you that you got a plan.
It's like a library book?
Next up, we have Mr. Glenn Peterson. Glenn, help me out. Is this five or six terms?
Four.
No. It ain't four because I got four and you're older than me.
Raise your right hand. I, Glenn Peterson, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Bastrop ISD Board of Trustees, place five, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
Ashley.
And last but not least.
Mr. Munching.
Raise your right hand. I, Ashley Munching, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Bastrop ISD Board of Trustees, place seven, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
Thank you very much, Judge Dugan. We really appreciate you being here.
It is an honor to do it. My kids went through BISD and so y'all are at the helm. You've got a good captain. Y'all are the ship. So, I appreciate the hard work at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I didn't want to escape anybody. We're certainly proud of these two guys for getting their, for being in their second term, but Glenn Peterson is serving his fifth term of three years as a board trustee member and we really appreciate it, Glenn.
Thank you.
Been such a great supporter and trustee for the school district and for the kids of this district. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Wholeheartedly agree. Now, we come to the point in our meeting where we do, once a year, we reorganize the board. We can change presidents, we can change secretaries, and if everybody knows, all the jobs pay the same. But we will take, we will entertain motions for board president, vice president, board secretary, either separate or all together.
President Allen, I move that, I mean, things have gone so well these past few years and I think we all can agree that our current slate is working extremely well. So, I suggest that we keep it the same. So, President James Allen, Vice President Ashley Munching, and Secretary Molly McClure.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to keep the motion, keep the members the same as board president, vice president, and secretary. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have reorganized the board.
All right. Congratulations.
Great. Now, on to some, some really exciting things. We're going to ask Angela Lopez and Joxon Benza to come up. They're both fourth graders and they're both from Red Rock Elementary. I see your principals back there in support. We appreciate her being here. Just a little bit before we get started, Angela loves to read. Looks like we're going to hear from Joxon first, but Angela loves to read. One of her favorite things to do is check out new books from Red Rock Elementary Library. Angela recently presented to her peers a full recitation of Martin Luther King's "I Have a Dream" speech. Angela's parents are Rolando Lopez and Sandra Garcia. If you're here, please stand and be recognized. And before we get going, we're going to talk just a little bit about Joxon. Joxon Benza. He's an avid reader and writer. He recently won the Principal's Writing Challenge and is a member of the thirty-five-point Accelerated Reader Club at Red Rock. He is thinking he will be a published author one day. Joxon's parents are Javier and Benza, or Javier Benza and Alma Martinez. If you're here, please stand and be recognized. Okay, Joxon, it's all yours.
There are lots of things that show integrity. Only way to show integrity is to have a good attitude and if you make a promise, you have to keep it. Being respectful to everyone and also helping people who haven't finished yet is another example of it. You also got to say positive things to others and to yourself so that you don't hurt others' feelings or your own feelings. There's two more things to know what integrity is, and it is to be honest and loyal.
For me, I think integrity is finding something that's not yours and giving it back to the owner of that thing. Like, one time I found a same color bow that looked like humanus. When I looked, her bow was gone, so I knew it was hers, so I gave it to her. That is, that is one, that is a way that I did integrity. And also, there was another time when I found a blue mechanical pencil and the ones on my table told me that it's Hugo, so I gave it to him. And I, and, there are many ways people can inter, everybody can do integrity. You can do it everywhere. For example, if you find a dog and in its name tag it has its phone number, you call that number and the owner of that thing, of that number and the owner says, "Thank you for finding her dog." There is integrity everywhere that you can do. Integrity is also in your house. Like, you find your brother's toy and you give it to him. There is integrity around the world.
Thank you both very much. It takes a lot of bravery to get up there in front of all these people and talk and you both did very well. Superintendent Murray, it's now time to introduce your student advisory council.
That was a great note to end on because I know, I've got a few here that don't mind talking at all. Oh, yeah. I went there, Hannah. I went there. My student advisory council, student advisory council members each month. We're blessed to have them here. And we've had these students here before and they had such a great time. They asked that they could come back. And we're here at the end of the year. In the summer, we don't ask our, our student advisory council members to come because they're busy with their summer vacations and jobs and, and sports and everything else. And that is the case tonight. We actually, we're going to have six students here, but with everything else going on in the spring, we couldn't get all six here. But we do have two students from Cedar Creek High School, two juniors, Kirsten Watson and Hannah Thompson. They're here. Thanks for being here, ladies. And a senior from Bastrop High School, Jake Nampkin. Jake, thanks for being here. We appreciate you all being here. I promise, board members, if you don't ask them some questions, they will ask you some questions.
I'm trying to get myself banned. You won't let me.
So, we'll, we'll see how it goes. Thanks for being here. We appreciate it. Now, next, you know, we, we did a little bit of this the other, the other day. We had a wonderful retirement reception at the PAC the other day. We have that each year and it's such a wonderful event. We have it in the foyer of the PAC, which is a beautiful facility and we're so blessed to have that. And we give our, we started tradition several years ago. We give some beautiful wooden rocking chairs with a plaque on the back of the rocking chair for our, for our retirees and we had, we had a really good time the other day. Did that. And we did that with two ladies here, but I want to give special recognition to two ladies who are retiring after several years in education. One, thirty-one years total in education, six years with BISD. And then also another person who's given over thirty years of her life to public education in Texas. And that's, and then also nineteen years of service to Bastrop ISD at two different stints. She was here and, and then, and went off and then came back. And, but these two ladies are retiring and I can't say enough about both of them. I'm going to mention their names in a minute, but I wanted to say all the things first because I know when I mention names, people are going to give applause and duly noted, give them appreciation. But I want to make sure I say a few things first. These two ladies have really given their heart and soul, not only to the students of Bastrop ISD, but to their fellow staff members and more importantly, to kids in Texas for, like I said, over thirty years. Combined, they have sixty-three years of total experience in public education. And so, we're so blessed, not only in Bastrop ISD, but in education. And you hear a lot about education these days, but we're blessed to have people who dedicate their lives in the service of, of young people. And so, I would like to give due recognition to our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Janie Pollard. Janie? And as well, I'm going to let you sit down so we can, right, that's right. We've got to do this right. Like I said, a lady who not only gave thirty-two years of total years of education, dedication to education in the state of Texas, but nineteen years to Bastrop ISD, and that is Nancy Roll. Nancy?
Thank you, ladies. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for everything you've done for our students and our staff.
All right.
Steve, we're going to continue with the recognition.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we got a lot, but we love recognition, so we're glad we got a lot of it here towards the end of the school year. We're going to ask Emily Bain to come up and do some recognition for our National Library Month.
Hello, my name is Emily Bain and I serve Bastrop as the Coordinator of Digital Learning. And it's my honor to recognize our District Library Media Specialist for National Library Month, a tradition that started in this country in nineteen fifty-eight. There's a widely held misconception, most likely leftover from maybe around nineteen fifty-eight, that a library is all about books and that a librarian simply checks out and resheelves these said books. Anyone who has worked directly with our Library Media Specialist knows that this, this description is, in a word, inaccurate. In reality, libraries are all about information, finding and collecting information, analyzing and manipulating information, repackaging and redistributing information. Sometimes that looks like traditional research. Sometimes that looks like escaping into a book. But in our district, this year, it looks like an entire ninth grade class learning how to use Google Doc tools to avoid plagiarism, as we saw with Media Specialist Janet Allen. If you'll stand, please. We'll do this now. Yay! It looks like the group of fourth graders at Blue Bonnet Elementary that created comic books based on their own narratives using Lego visualizer software, thanks to the direction of Media Specialist Chris Fiebrick, who is also here. It looks like a butterfly garden set up so that students could monitor the transformation of butterflies from caterpillar to butterfly stage as Media Specialist Allison Harris, who is here in the back. And there are many, many other ways. This is just a snapshot of some of the things that these professionals provide in addition to books and shelving books in this district. They know I appreciate them, but it means a lot when our district leaders recognize our Library Media Specialist's importance to the development of literacy and curiosity in our students. So, on behalf of our Library Media Specialist, if you'll stand up one more time, we'll give you our round of applause.
Thank you, Emily. Next, Les Hudson and some other folks.
Mr. Murray, Board President, Mr. Allen, Board Members, and Mr. Murray's Admin Council. I have with me today, Mr. Hudson, Ms. Woodley, and I am Diana Rios, the Head Nurse for the District. At this time, we want to take and recognize a special group of students from Cedar Creek High School's Clinical Practicum Number Two, which is designed to give students practical application of previously studied knowledge and skills. We have with us today Jennifer Farias, Maribel Gutierrez, Caitlin Julson, Angelina Luna, Lucia Rivera, Sandra Rosas, Destiny Thomas, and Joanna Vasquez. These young ladies are individuals that were instrumental in helping the Health Services Department and campus nurses accomplish state mandated screenings for vision, hearing, and scoliosis. They logged over a thousand hours of service over two years. They could have, this could have potentially cost the district approximately ninety-four hundred dollars if subs would have been used. The total number of students screened in two thousand and fourteen were five thousand forty-eight and in two thousand and fifteen, five thousand nineteen. As a result, during these past two years, a thousand students have been referred for additional vision testing, two hundred students for hearing, and a hundred and ten for scoliosis follow-up. On Friday, these young ladies will sit for their national certification test for patient care technicians. These young ladies have utilized the skills they've learned in their clinical practicum class to obtain heights and weights and blood pressures on the pediatric population of students in BISD. They were also responsible for hosting and running two blood drives. They, they are the creators of the Shattered Dreams presentation. They have also done clinical rotations at South Austin Medical Center and Silver Pines Nursing Home. Some of these young ladies have earned their medical coding and billing national certification. The hands-on experience that these students have obtained will not only help them obtain employment post-graduation, it will provide them with the opportunity to help guide their career in health services. All of the nurses have enjoyed working with them and we are sad to see them leave because they're all seniors. We are glad to see that they've reached huge educational milestones in their academic career. As you go and achieve bigger and greater things, we want to thank you for your teamwork. You are an essential piece. Health services is like a jigsaw puzzle. A single missing piece leaves it unfinished. Without any one of you, we would not be complete. Thank you for all your teamwork during the past two years. And as a token of our appreciation and thanks for all you have done, we'd like to give you a lapel pin that shows you as an essential piece of our puzzle. And without each one of you, our puzzle would not be complete. Best of luck and congratulations on all your accomplishments.
I just want to say, this, this is an amazing accomplishment and thank you all for helping us out with all of the students and all the work that you did. But just the fact that, that you have experienced this hands-on education and you're going to be applying that and showing all the caring that is so true to the field that you're going into, I assume, that you've already experienced, is truly amazing. So, thank you. This is very impressive to be able to meet you tonight and see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Coach Jones, you're up.
Nurse Rios got out the door, but we want to make a little special recognition to all our nurses. Last Wednesday was National Nurses Day and all of our nurses do a great job. We have the Cedar Creek Eagle baseball team coming in. Another great playoff run and Coach Moore's going to talk about them.
Good evening. Thank you, board, first and foremost, for the recognition. I want to thank our administrators, Ms. Cornelius and Ms. Gabriel, who's in attendance today. This year was a, a good year for us, not only on, on the baseball field, but also in the classroom. And that's one thing we stress first and foremost, is being, holding ourselves to a high standard in the classroom and on the baseball field, everything will take care of itself and these young men did a great job of that this year. About our record, we finished twenty-two and seven this year, which is a school record for us. Once again, we finished second in district and this is our third year of, of making the playoffs, which is a, a huge accomplishment for Cedar Creek High School and, and the community. And we lost in the, the first round of playoffs, a three-game series against Visceral Ridge. Some accolades, we had, we had four first-team all-district selections, two second-team all-district selections, three honorable mentions, but the one I'm most impressed with and proud of is eight all-academic selections. Introduce these young men one by one, every last one of them are dynamic young men. And for those seniors out here, really going to miss them and I know they're going to have a, a promising future here shortly. But first one we have here is Cameron Stahl. Cameron was an honorable mention, first baseman. Next, we have Chance Medina. Chance, first-team all-district and he also is an All-Centex All-Star selection.
All right.
We have Pat Bardell. Also a first-team all-district selection and an All-Centex selection as well. We have Bryce Wyatt. Bryce is also a first-team all-district selection. Next is Logan Lopez. Honorable mention, second baseman. Next, we have Philip Figueroa. Philip was an honorable mention outfielder as a freshman.
Freshman. Very good.
And last but not least, Angel Ornellis. Angel was an honorable mention all-district as well. And once again, we really appreciate the recognition and we look for bigger and better things to come here in the near future and, and I'm really very proud to be a part of this district and, and look forward to the great things this district has to come here in the near future.
John, don't go anywhere, okay?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Folks, this gentleman started this baseball program, how many years ago? Five, six years ago?
Six years, yes, sir.
Extremely dedicated to the young men in this program, extremely dedicated to Cedar Creek High School and to Bastrop ISD. Wouldn't even have a round of applause to Coach Moore for doing this.
And if you've never seen Coach Moore show the, the runners on base, how many outs there are, it's, it's like, it's like a symphony. I just get mesmerized watching him do it. Really great job.
Guys, congratulations.
Next, we have the Bastrop High School baseball team. Our Bastrop High School baseball team also made the playoffs, had a one-game playoff, and Coach Walker is here to talk about them.
All right. Thanks for having us. Like I said, my name's Coach Walker. It's my pleasure here to introduce these young men. This season was a hard-fought season for us. One thing we said going into the season is that we want to be the best, so we're going to play the best. We played, or of all of our losses, we only had one loss against a team that did not make the playoffs. We played eleven games against the top twenty-five opponent this season. We were by-district finalists for the second year in a row, which is the first time that's happened in the history of our program since at least nineteen ninety. We had five academic all-district, one academic all-state. We had several first, or we had one first team and several honorable mentions and one on the second team. Introduce these young men. Cody Van Clark. Sophomore, first-team all-district outfielder and first-team academic all-district. Harrison Bodine. He'll be entering the military this summer. Cameron Frost, freshman. Cameron came in and played a pivotal role for us as a freshman. It's great, the future's bright with him. Kay Belucic, sophomore. John Michael Arnett. John Michael Arnett. John Mike was an academic all-district selection. Tanner Holland, Jr. Cameron Nutt, freshman. Another young guy we're going to be counting on in the future. James Hunking. And Garrett Bodine, sophomore. Also academic all-district selection. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, and I appreciate all the time. I want to say thanks to our administration and all the support that we've got through the season. It was a hard-fought year, and our kids earned everything they got, and I'm very proud of them. Thank you for your time.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you.
Note on that, Coach Walker and the team, they faced all kinds of adversity during the year, and they fought through it. It was a sign of a really good team that fought through that adversity and got into playoffs. So, appreciate it. Next will be the Cedar Creek High School softball team. And Coach Sharkey will introduce her team and talk about her team.
Hello. Hello, just going to talk a little bit about us. First, I'll introduce who we are. We have Michaela Adams, our third baseman. Lucia Ramirez, an outfielder. Shannon Klaus, our shortstop. Sam Burkhart, an outfielder. Maddie Pauswang, an outfielder. Shelby Houston, who fought for us. Chriselle Amata, who played outfield. Callie Pauswang, who played first. Gabby Gonzalez, who helped us out in the outfield. And then Cody, who was our trainer. And Coach Jones, right there, who helped me out with everything as we kind of went along the way. A little bit about our season. This year, we went 21-10. We were runner-up in the district competition, and then we went on to compete in the playoffs, and were bi-district champs and area champs, and then went out in the regional qualifier round versus Georgetown. Right now, with us, we have six first-team all-district young ladies. We had Shelby Houston, who received Offensive Player of the Year for the district. And we had Ariana Samaripa, who's unfortunately not here because they have a middle-school banquet right now, and her sister's middle-school player. But she was the newcomer of the year. And then our remaining first-round picks were Kristen Pruitt, our pitcher. Shannon Klaus, our shortstop. Maddie Pauswang, who was at our center field. And now I'm going to already forget. Now, oh, Michaela Adams, who was third base. Did I say you already? Okay, Michaela. I'll cheat and use my notes so I don't forget. Yeah. Our second-team pick was Callie Pauswang, who actually was injured for quite a big chunk of our season, and I think we could have got some more votes had she had a little bit more in the middle there. But she did great for us once she came back and got into the playoffs. She actually helped us to get past Leander, so that was super exciting. Lucia Ramirez got honorable mention, and so that was very exciting for us. We had six all-district academic young ladies. They are our academic. Gabby Gonzalez, Shannon Klaus, Callie and Maddie Pauswang, Ariana Samaripa, and Michaela Adams. Three of our seniors qualified for the academic all-state. I'm just waiting to hear back from that. But they are Shannon Klaus and Callie and Maddie Pauswang. So, it was a pretty exciting season. I'm very proud of our young ladies.
Hold on. I know you want to talk. There's no doubt you want to talk. Let me talk first. Yeah, I get to talk first. Last time I checked, I'm still in charge of this place. Rebecca, step up. Tell Bob to get out of the way. We want to talk to you, okay? Much like I talked to John Moore, I want to talk about Rebecca, because Rebecca's been here from the very beginning. I know she likes to give all her credit to her players, but this program has been built from the ground up, and I've been to every playoff series the last two years, and had a great time watching the girls play. And so, I just want to say thank you to you for the wonderful job you've done in building this program. And she's also our assistant athletic coordinator at Cedar Creek High School. Let's give Coach Sharkey a big round of applause.
Now, I want to brag on her a little more. When Bastrop's field was unplayable for the playoff game, and I was at the regional track meet, I called Coach Sharkey, and I said, "We've got to have a place to play for Bastrop." And they had won their series. And her and Coach Moore and the baseball team, which I didn't get to talk about, they went to work, and they got the field ready. Never complained, never asked for anything. They had that field totally ready for Bastrop to be able to play there. And that's the kind of working together with our two schools that we love, and Coach Sharkey and Coach Moore both need to be recognized for that and their kids. Thanks.
Great job, ladies.
Next will be the Bastrop High School Boys and Girls Track Team. Be the Bastrop High School Softball Team.
Yeah, there you go.
Again, our softball team had, wow, not very many losses all year, and battled the whole year. I think Coach Sharkey and Coach Morgan do want to get a piece of Georgetown because Georgetown eliminated both of our teams in the playoffs. And so, I think next year, there'll be some paybacks, so.
Hey, thanks for having us, really. And before I say anything else, I need to make sure I say thank you. My administration was really exceptionally fantastic, especially with all of the crazy pullouts and last-minute changes with all of the rain delays we had this season. So, they were pretty wonderful. I am with three girls. Most of my other girls are either at work or select practices. I have Alexis Gonzalez. She is a graduating senior. She was our catcher and at times, third base or short if we needed to play that. We have Erin Mosley. She's a junior. And Mackenzie Pace is also a junior, and both of them will be returning next year. Our record for the season was 21, 9, and 2. And yes, yes, Coach, I want Georgetown. But we took a bite of Georgetown. We took a game from them, and I'm pleased with that. We have nine out of 12 girls with district team nominations, and I'm not going to announce those to you because I still haven't announced them to them yet. We had four academic all-states. Alexis Gonzalez is one of our academic all-states. And we have, goodness, majority of my two JV teams made A or AV honor roll, both six weeks of competitive season, so.
Folks, academic all-state's a big deal. Let's give a round of applause. Great job, ladies. Thank you.
Now, we recognize the Bastrop High School Boys and Girls Track Team. Coach Mayberry had a family emergency and called me earlier today. Had to go home. And Coach Henson is here to talk about the track team.
Good afternoon, everyone. Members of the board, Mr. Murray, thank you for having us today. My name is Coach Jimmy Henson, and I'll be introducing our Boys and Girls Track Team and going over some of the accomplishments that they've had this season. First and foremost, I want to introduce Ms. Nastia Carter. She was an area qualifier in the 100 hurdles. Just wait, I think. Next up, Ms. Grace Flores. She was also an area qualifier in the 4x100-meter relay and the 4x200-meter relay. Grace was also a regional qualifier in those same relays. I want to introduce Ms. Reniqua Higgins. Ms. Higgins was an area qualifier in the 200-meter dash, the 4x100-meter relay, and the 4x200-meter relay, and she was an regional qualifier in all of those same events as well. Next, Ms. Dejeanique Kellogg, right there. She was an area qualifier in both the 100-meter hurdles and the 300-meter hurdles, and she was a regional qualifier in the 100 hurdles. Ms. Hallie McKnight, she was academic all-district. She was an area qualifier in the 4x100-meter relay and the triple jump, and she was a regional qualifier in the triple jump as Ms. Demone Rector, one of our young freshmen who came on very, very strong for us this year. She was an area qualifier in the 4x100-meter relay. Expecting some big things out of this young lady down the road. Got Ms. Panea Waits right over here. She was an area qualifier in the 100-meter hurdles, the 300-meter hurdles, and the 4x400-meter relay. Last but certainly not least, Ms. Alicia Willoughby. She was one of our academic all-district members, and she was an area qualifier in the 800-meter run and the 1600-meter run. Now, on to the boys, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Shalom Alvarez, right there. He was academic all-district, and he was an area qualifier in the 1600-meter run as well. Okay, Mr. Reagan Carter. Reagan was academic all-district. He was an area qualifier in the 200-meter dash, in the 4x200-meter relay, and the 4x400-meter relay. He was also a regional qualifier in the 200-meter dash, the 4x200-meter relay, the 4x400-meter relay, and the 4x, oh, the 4x400-meter relay that placed first in the region with a time of 3 minutes and 19 seconds. Mr. Travis Carter, also academic all-district. He was an area qualifier in the 400-meter dash for us. Mr. Adonis Davis, one of our veterans, area qualifier in the 4x100-meter relay, the 4x200-meter relay, and the long jump, and also a regional qualifier in all of those same events as well. Mr. Isaac Guerra, another one of our young freshmen who came on very, very strong for us this year. Area qualifier in the 4x100 and 4x200-meter relays, and also a regional qualifier in those same events as well. Next is Mr. Joey Hernandez, area qualifier in the 800 and the 1600-meter run. Mr. Jovan Jones, a regional and an area qualifier in both the 4x1 and the 4x200-meter relays. Mr. Jaden Watson, an area qualifier in all of the relays, 4x1, 4x2, and 4x4, for both area, regionals, and the 4x4 for the state team also. Last but certainly not least was one of our young freshmen who is also represented today, Mr. Tyrone Wilson, a very dedicated young man who competed hard all season for us. We're very, very proud of these young men and women. One thing that we believe in our track program is in order to truly be successful and compete at the highest levels, you've got to love the process as much as you love the prize. And if you do that, then we're on the way for some really great things.
Coach, I want to say thank you, and I want to say congratulations to all the young ladies and young men. It was an exciting season. Every track meet we went to, whether I was timing or watching, I liked the timer once in a while. It was fun. Did double duty the other night, and I was thrilled too, because one of the most exciting events all year in the state of Texas is the state track meet. So, after I left the Cedar Creek playoff softball game, my wife got in the car with me. We went to Austin, and I got there just in time to see the 4x400 relay and watch us compete very well.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. We appreciate all the support from you.
You know, both our track teams, and if you haven't been to the state track meet, it's amazing. We were there the other day. The winning, actually, the person who got third place in the shot put, threw the shot put like 65 feet. He got third place. Okay? The person who got second threw 69 feet. He got second. The winner threw 71 feet. And is just a junior. So, that's the kind of competition. I know our kids that went and competed wanted to do better. The competition is the best in the world. I mean, it's on tap with some world races. And so, all of our track teams at both schools have just done a great job. So, again, thank you.
Great job, Al.
Now, we have our Cedar Creek High School Track Team, led by Coach Robbie Watson.
Thank you, ladies. Hello, I'm Robert Watson. I'm the head track coach at Cedar Creek High School. This year, probably one of the big things we had is we had 80 athletes out for track on the Boys and Girls side combined, which is up from the past. We had, we took 17 athletes to area, and we took two to regionals. For area, we had Avery Tuggle, qualified in the 4x400-meter relay. Brooke Townsend, she qualified, she's a sophomore. She qualified in the 400-meter dash and the Alexa Flores, we got her out this year pole vaulting. First time ever pole vaulting. She ended up qualifying to go to area in the pole vault. Next, we have another sophomore, Lauren Lopez. She qualified in the 800-meter dash. We have a freshman, Sean Patterson, another pole vaulter that just, first time pole vaulting this year, qualified for area in the pole vault. Next, we have Peyton Tuggle. He qualified in the 100-meter dash. Courtney Black, he's a sophomore. Courtney qualified in the 110 hurdles, the 300-meter hurdles, and the 4x4. And then Courtney got to go and run at regionals in the 300-meter hurdles, and he made it all the way to Saturday. He got to run in the last race, and he was very close in the last race. Next up, we have Tristan Hendricks. Tristan qualified in the 4x400-meter relay. And last up, we have another sophomore, Stone Jones. Stone qualified in the Discus. One thing that you'll notice about our track team this year is we're pretty young. We don't graduate. I think we graduate four seniors. And so, they're all coming back. We have a lot of growth, a lot of potential right now with this group. Thank you.
Thanks, Coach.
The highlight for us was Coach Watson getting so many kids out to run track. And we all know that it's, and he's done a great job with his staff getting those kids out. And last thing, we talked about it before, so of all the sports we had, we had one at each high school that did not make the playoffs. Every other sport advanced to the playoffs. It's a great, great note to our coaches and our staffs and our administrators at both high schools to have that many kids get to participate in the postseason. So, thanks again.
Bob, we done, right? You got it? We had tennis down here. Did you already do tennis last month?
Oh, wait a second.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think we got, they're out there waiting.
Yes, I want to introduce our Bastrop Tennis Team. They were not able to be here. Thanks, Mr. Murray. What would I do without you?
How much time you got?
They weren't able to be here last month due to the fact they were competing at the regional tennis tournament. And so, Coach Eric, we want to recognize them. They advanced to the regional track, or the regional tennis tournament. And so, Robbie?
Thank you, Coach Jones. And before I, can I take that off? Before I recognize these young men and women here, I just want to tell you guys that I really appreciate the fact that the school board recognizes the athletic, the different sports and everything. I was actually, I've been at the state tennis tournament for the last couple of days, and today I rode with the layman coach, and I told him that if we got another rain delay, I was going to have to leave early. We're going to miss some matches because we had a school board meeting tonight, and he said, "Good God, you go to those things?" And I said, "Yes, well, we actually get honored." And he said, I said, "Our board recognizes us not only for team tennis, but..." And he said, "Our board recognizes us, not only for team tennis, for individual tennis." And he says...he just said, "Man, that's really amazing." He said, "That's really, really cool, and that's a nice thing that they do." So I'm guessing they don't do that over at Hays. So thank you guys for recognizing us and taking the time out of a busy schedule. So as you all may or may not know, spring is individual tennis, the fall is team tennis. And these young men and women here competed really hard all season. We had...we did the full slate of seven tournaments, including district and regionals. And I'll just kind of go through the line and recognize all them really quick and let you know how they did. Jake Namkin is a longtime captain of the team here, and he was all district last year, made all district this year, and was a member of the district mixed doubles championship team. So...and guys, they got a tough draw at regionals and went out, but these guys played well all season. They only lost five matches all spring. Gabby Morales here was our girl singles. She was runner-up in district and went in, won her first match at regionals. So she is officially a regional quarterfinalist. So really fantastic player, won two tournaments this year in the spring. Brenda Sanchez was an all district player, was a district champion last year in mixed doubles, was an all district...was third place this year in girls' doubles. Susan Fuentes is a freshman who is one of our most improved players of the year, competed hard at district, threw them in a variety of things, and just performed well all season. Brian LeBlanc, one of our boys' doubles teams, one of our team leaders. Academic all district last semester in team tennis, academic all district this semester in individual tennis. Michael Liriano, freshman, mixed doubles, threw them in mixed doubles at the...kind of at the last minute, only got them really about just over a month with his partner. And he ended up being in an all district mixed doubles, and that they got fourth. And then David Rodriguez, this young man here, just decided to start playing tennis again this summer, and picked up his racket, and had a tremendous spring, and just really performed...really admirably performed great, doubles and singles both, and a true leader on the team. And can't be prouder of these kids. And they really have re-energized the program, and I think they got everything moving in the right direction. Hate to see our seniors go for the great things that they did, but they really left a good legacy for us, and really excited about the young men and women that we have coming up. So thank you guys again for recognizing us, and thank you all for having a great season and being great kids.
And the great thing too about our tennis team is we're sharing athletes. We had Michael played football, I think we had some other kids that came...they would come from football practice and go to tennis practice during team tennis. And our coaches being able to share athletes, and so it was a neat deal. I got to watch them play a lot this year. So again, thanks, guys.
Somebody drop the mic?
I just dropped the mic.
I want to make sure we haven't left...you didn't leave it off again. Before you start getting cocky. Dr. Hewitt. Folks, you heard all evening, been here an hour so far for recognition. We like recognition. Well, you heard about academic all district and academic all state, and that's a credit to our student athletes. But the students that are going to be recognized were competing in academics, and we're very excited about that.
Thank you, Board. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Community, thanks for being here tonight. UIL Academics, twenty-nine contests exist in UIL Academics. They are designed to complement the curriculum, to motivate students as they acquire higher levels of knowledge, that challenge them to confront issues of importance, and to provide students with the opportunity to demonstrate mastery in specific skills. These guys are challenged to think critically and creatively, and exhibit much more than just knowledge and comprehension. The BHS UIL academic team rises early in the morning to travel to these meets across the state, generally about 5:00 PM, 5:00 AM, and they stay all day, just kind of sitting around studying. This season starts sometimes in August or September with practices after school. The folks here that I'd like to recognize, first Mia Hernandez. Mia was second in poetry interpretation. Next, we have Olivia Herzog. Olivia was third in headlines, first in spelling and vocabulary, and first place in the spelling team. And a specific note about Olivia, she has been to regionals all four years in high school. So that's pretty awesome. Next, we have Ariana Islas. She was second in spelling and vocab, and first place on the spelling team. Next, we have Arlita Carillo. First place spelling team. Isai Espinoza. First place on the spelling team. Stephen Etherington. Third place in mathematics. I don't think...I don't see a guy here tonight. He was third place in science and first place in chemistry. And we have Minka Atkinson. She was second in news and first in headlines. And a special note about Minka, she qualified for state competition. It's gonna be held on May 24th. So congratulations. Last but certainly not least, I would like to thank Mrs. Bennett, our UIL Coordinator, who coordinates all of these activities and chases these guys around and helps them get to where they need to go, and we really appreciate your hard work, Mr. Murray.
Congratulations. Ms. Gabriel, you're next. It is now.
Awesome. Thank you all so much for having us this evening. We wanted to take the opportunity to recognize and congratulate our outstanding academic UIL regional qualifiers. We have Victoria Chin placed first place in accounting. Madison Winsky, second place calculator. Ashley Riddlin, sixth place calculator. We had a second place team for calculator that consisted of Madison Winsky, Ashley Riddlin, and Mariana Zuniga. James Hollamack and Wyatt Buckner were fifth place and sixth place current issues. For mathematics, we had first place of Hondu, second place of William Spring, fifth place of Melanie Peavy, and our first place team for mathematics consisted of Hondu, William, Claire Jones, and Melanie Peavy. For number sense, we had Melanie Peavy first place, Claire Jones second place, William Spring fourth place, Humberto Rodriguez sixth place, and the team got first place in number Chad Jenkins received fourth place for persuasive speaking. Eliza Bravo, third place for poetry. Elaine Bravo, second place for pose. For our science, we had Marco Alamon was first place in both biology and chemistry. William Spring was first place in physics. And Marco Alamon was first place overall science. William Spring, second place overall science. And Ashley Riddlin, second...sixth place overall science. Our first place went to Cedar Creek High School as well for the science team. It consisted of Marco Alamon, William Spring, Ashley Riddlin, Hannah Thompson, Christian Gormaldo, and Wyatt Buckner. We also want to recognize our outstanding faculty for their hard work. Like Dr. Hewitt said, they get up and leave school at 5:00, 5:30 in the morning, gone all day, and really spend a lot of time after school and before school as well preparing. So we want to recognize Ms. Beth Box. She's our UIL Coordinator. Ryan Meyer was journalism and speech. Eric Crunk was our science coach. Maggie McBry, social studies and current issues. Keith Gertz, accounting. Lori Herschep, ready writing. Ashley Robinson, literacy, criticism, and spelling. And Jeanette Graham was our mathematics, number sense, and calculator coach. We also want to recognize Bashrop ISD at this time. They swept number sense, mathematics, taking first through sixth place in the district. And congratulations to the Bashrop High School and Colorado River Collegiate Academy for this outstanding accomplishment. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks, Crystal.
Good evening, y'all. And I'm sorry, I don't have any kids tonight. They're on a bus coming back from Dallas from the Speak Up, Speak Out competition up in Dallas. So they're probably around Waco right now. We had six qualifiers for regions. Kiran Dunn was one of our qualifiers in number sense. Sidney Jones qualified in informative speaking. And then we had a social studies team that qualified. The social studies team was Chris Sioffi, Monte Moore, Megan Wood, and William Millsaps. And they had to prepare on World War I. They read The Guns of August. I don't know if any of you have ever read that novel. Something else. Anyways, they did a really, really good job. We learned a lot. Our UIL Coordinator, Dylan Broughton, is a first-year teacher, and he learned some lessons that he'll never forget. And that's good, because those...I mean, that's the best way to learn. So thank you very much, and we will do better next year.
Again, it was outstanding. We have a little more recognition, because we're gonna spotlight one of our campuses. We ask each month for a principal to spotlight campus at both the chamber luncheon, and then we ask them to come to our board meeting. And we have the principal of Blue Bonnet Elementary, Ms. Allison Hall.
Good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Allison.
You're welcome. Well, good evening, and thank you for having me. On behalf of Blue Bonnet, this has been a very productive and efficient week and day in school year, so I'm very excited to be here and share all of the great things that our campus has been able to create and participate in this year. If you would please, just very quickly, Nurse Rios, thank you. She's passing out a little pamphlet, because I was trying to figure out, what do I get up and say, how do I spotlight my campus in just a couple of quick minutes? So here it is, at your fingertips. I have scanned this pamphlet several times, and I know that there's still something that I'm leaving out. So please forgive me for that if that is the case. One thing in concluding my first year as a principal, I have leaned on Blue Bonnet's vision statement quite often. So if you'll please follow with me, it states, "Blue Bonnet Elementary will be an inviting and compassionate school community, united with families and our dedication to children through a commitment to innovative instruction and fostering a desire to learn." And so that not only stops with our teachers, we also are doing our very, very best to make sure that we are able to have a commitment from our families as well on every single level. And so when I say we have a true professional learning community, I genuinely believe that, because there are so many various ways that we get our teachers involved with our students' lives on the instructional level, and make sure to reach out and touch our whole child. We have a lot of different things going on on our campus to make sure that we are definitely supporting that vision. One thing that I am extremely, extremely proud of is that throughout the years, we have not always had a hundred percent PTA membership. And so this year, coming from our faculty and staff, we were able to say that everybody that comes on that campus day in and day out participates with our wonderful PTA, and they've also paid the PTA dues. And because of that, we'll be getting special recognition from the State PTA Association this year. So I'm very proud of that. This was also a first year that we had a ballet full cloroico, and the students have done extremely well, and I'm anticipating that the numbers for next year's group will significantly increase. We have an early act first night service team, which is an organization that helps support character education. And so those kiddos have really kick-started that. And matter of fact, they're wanting to do a lot of things, a lot of activities, where I'm trying to help make sure that we're streamlined and we don't bite off more than we can chew. Because we definitely want to make sure that anything that we do and participate in, that it's efficient and it's effective, and we're not just doing something to have a checkbox. So we're making sure that everything we do is very efficient. And as we all know, it takes a village. So because of everyone listed on here, and even some partners unknown, Blue Bonnet is able to be successful. Thank you, Board, for everything that you've done to continue to support Bashrop ISD and specifically Blue Bonnet Elementary.
Thank you, Allison.
Mr. Murray, I'd like to also give some...Billy Moore, the president of the Cedar Creek Rotary, is gonna give an announcement on some recognition of what we got on early act first night. Billy?
Yes, I wrote up a proposal to the local District 5870 of our Rotary District detailing our work in the schools of the early act first night character education program. And it was accepted by district, judged against about...I think there's like sixty-two clubs in our district, selected as the nominee to be sent to Rotary International, and was subsequently selected by Rotary International as outstanding achievement for District 5870. So we will be receiving an award at the Council of Rotary Clubs this summer in June from Rotary International for work done in the schools here with the early act first night program. And I think the thing that clinched when I wrote the application for us is that every day, there's over 5,000 students that say the four-way test first thing in the morning. I think they like to hear that.
Thank you for doing that, Billy.
Okay, we're gonna move on here a little bit before we go to the business part. Ms. Jenna Allen has been patiently sitting there through all this recognition, so we appreciate that. We're gonna give you an opportunity to come up and speak now.
Members of the Board, I just wanted to thank you for your support of our district, our schools, our administration, our libraries, and most of all, for our students, because we couldn't do what we do in our schools without the Board's support. I believe our libraries make a difference, but we can't make a difference without the support of the Board and our administration. And I just wanted to say thank you from our libraries and our librarians, and from our students. I don't know that you hear it enough, how much you're appreciated, and I know what you do is a tough job. I know you get calls. I know that it's not always pleasant, but I appreciate everything you do, and I know our librarians do, and I know our parents do too. Thank you very much.
Ms. Allen, that goes a lot farther than you know. That's really appreciated for you to take the time to come up and say thank you and so forth. And we return appreciation to you guys for what y'all do day in and day out, and how much the libraries mean to our kids and to our district. So thank you.
And anytime you want to come back and speak again.
Y'all can come every month. It'd be great. Now we're gonna head to the business part of our meeting, and we're gonna ask our CFO, Senator Callahan, to have a public hearing on our budget. And we'll get to you kids just in a little bit. Hannah, so be patient.
I know that...you know that's gonna be hard for me.
Oh, I know. Oh, I know.
Should I get like a timer?
No, we like her.
We do like you.
You can talk.
All right. Not many people do that, that's good.
Join the club.
When you're the finance person, people love or hate you. I have a PowerPoint, but I'm not sure. I guess...
There we go.
This is a public hearing, so after my presentation, we can take questions from the audience, as well as the Board. Thursday night at our Agenda Review Meeting, we did have a Board workshop, Budget Workshop, which we typically do the week, usually at the May Agenda Review Meeting. So a lot of good questions were asked, but again, we'll take questions for the public. What we'll be asking for, the Board, and it's in your packet, and my Budget Board Book went away, or I couldn't get logged back on, but we're going to be asking for you to adopt the Bashrop ISD 2016-17 Compensation Package, the General Fund Budget, the Food Service Budget, and the Debt Service Budget. And so I'll go through the presentation, and I'd be glad to entertain questions. This information will be uploaded onto our website as the prior meetings have been uploaded, so you can see the progression and the required documentation. There's a presentation, as well as, there's a presentation, and there's the actual budget documents that are a separate item. Again, this is our budget calendar for the year. Here we are, May, and it's been a busy year so far. We start in January, meeting with principals and directors, and working on staffing and everything that's needed. So we're glad tonight to be able to do an early adoption, which we do many times in non-legislative years, when we know what our state funding's going to be. That helps our HR department be able to do their, begin their staffing. So we're glad to be able to do that in the years that we can. Of course, we will, in August, propose our tax rate that'll be presented in September for adoption. We adopt the tax rate after our, we receive our certified values from the Appraisal District in July. We receive our preliminary values in April, when you're a July fiscal year. Our budget priority goals, just to go over those that we go, that we continue with each year, safety concern and security, which is always a high priority for the district. And this, each year, we've added safety access to our campuses. This next year, 1617, we're proposing to do safety access for our middle schools. The elementary and intermediates have been done. We also have security cameras in the budget. We, of course, added our Police Department last year, and we now have a staff of four, our Chief Yarborough and three Peace Officers. We added a third Peace Officer at the middle of this year. So in this year's budget, we have the second half of that salary. We also will be bringing our Night Watchmen into the district budget, as they, for last year, are part of our GCA contract, but they'll be, those positions will be brought under Chief Yarborough's direction. And so those salaries are included in this year's budget. Our priority goals for instructional and academic improvements, we have a system-wide writing initiative for next year, as well as the professional development that goes along with that. We have a restructuring of our instructional coaches, focus on response to intervention. We're going to be in year three of our early college high school. We are proposing full-time library media specialists for the 1617 year. We have slides with a little additional information with some of these. We also continue to support our bilingual and ESL program this year by increasing our bilingual stipend. We always try to give salary increases when possible. We're continuing with the high school freshman support, the MAPS program at the high schools. And of course, we'll have growth positions, you'll see information on. Again, I like to show the bilingual program growth that we have over the years in our LEP bilingual and ESL population, just so you know that that is a focus. We're increasing or proposing to increase our bilingual stipend with this budget from 3,000 to 4,500. When they survey the surrounding districts, that's going to be competitive, and hopefully will help us recruit and retain bilingual staff. As I mentioned, the instructional coaching model change. We, TLI funding for, ended in 1516, so it was a time to restructure our program. And each campus will have one instructional coach, will have K through 12 core content specialists at the district level, and then there will be additional coaches that will be assigned to schools based on need. So some, some campuses will actually have more than one coach, but it's, and that could change each year depending on the need from year to year, when they look at the data and see what those campuses will need. Again, year three in our Colorado River Academy, we'll add our third year, and we'll have approximately 179 students. Again, for the public, as you know, those students, when they graduate, can receive an associate's degree along with their high school diploma. We're adding two and a half core content positions for that campus, as well as a college access specialist that will travel with those students to ACC, and be in, in support of those students while they're off campus. And we are also proposing an assistant principal position that will support the CRCA and the Genesis Campus. Our budget assumptions for 1617, the estimated enrollment is 10,526. We're estimating an ADA, average daily attendance of 9,0999. Of course, we have a $1.04 tax rate. The CPTD values are the values that are assigned by the state. They're right at $3 billion. Our preliminary property values for tax collection purposes are 3.1 billion. Again, those are preliminary. And our estimated debt service tax rate for next year, 40 cents. Again, that'll be proposed in August. Just to look at our property values, and just based on the preliminary values, and we spoke about this Thursday night, we, this is what we're seeing, is about a 12% increase just on the values that we've received, but there are lots of, what do you call it, when you protest your taxes? And also, ag exemption still can be filed. So I don't foresee that being the actual growth when we get our final preliminary, our final proposed values, but that is what it's showing right now. I like to show the top 10 taxpayers, just so you can see the impact those have on the district. Not a lot of change from 15 to 2016, but just to show you that those are our, those make up a large part of our property growth, property values. This is hard to see, but again, enrollment and attendance growth, I like to show that, because that's what our ADA is based on, and our state aid. We're still growing about 3% average over the last 15 years. So that's good, good for the district. Our revenue changes from last year to this year, we're going to see about $1 million more in property value, just based on a conservative estimation. I certainly don't estimate that whole 12% growth for that, for that revenue. We're looking at about a $2.4 million increase in state aid, based on increase in ADA, increase in comp ed, and just all of the different programs. Federal, federal resource will be about the same. So we're looking at about $3.1 million more from last year to this year, for, from 1516 to 1617. This is a raise that we're proposing in this budget. For our paraprofessionals, a 3% of the midpoint. Our teachers, a straight 2% increase. And our administrative and professional support, 1.5% of the midpoint, and that gives you the estimated cost of those salaries. We looked at our HR Services Data Central, TASB, which is our HR support that we look at, and it does look like a lot of districts are looking at a 2% increase. Again, some districts, many districts have a September fiscal year, so they're not as far in the budget process we are. But this is a survey of, I can't remember how many districts, but it was a good number of districts that they surveyed so far. This budget proposes 16 new positions throughout the district, and those are listed in the, in the information that'll be posted on the website for the public that has more specifics. Six new positions for growth that we typically add for, they're unassigned at this time, but when school starts and the students start coming, we like to have those positions approved, so that if we have to split an elementary class, we can do that right away and not have to wait for Board approval. Again, as we spoke about the media specialist, full-time librarian media specialist at each campus. I mentioned the assistant principal at CRCA. We are also proposing an assistant principal at our Gateway Alternative School. The increase in bilingual stipends, early college high school, and the restructuring of the coaching model that we spoke about. Talking about the libraries and transforming libraries, adding those specialists to each campus, there's going to be a lot of new ideas that, that are going to happen in the library. I think one of the Board members asked that we'll have a presentation in their near future on what that's really going to look at, and Emily Bain will hopefully bring that to us, I think, in coordination with the Curriculum Department, and give a little more information on what that's really going to look like. Another change, based on this transforming of the libraries, will be that our intermediate schools will have a certified computer lab teacher now, instead of a teaching assistant. The elementaries will still have library assistants, but they will work with the library media specialist with grades, and that will be a different process, and that will look different than what we've seen in the past. Non-staffing considerations, of course, we still have to keep everybody getting to school and all of the other items that aren't instructional, of course, our transportation and maintenance contracts, those have increases as far as cost of living increases. Our communication budget beyond the bell, which is a part, works with our Curriculum Department in the tutoring. We have an increase in our technology budget, increase in officials' pay. What that means is for the officials that do football games, baseball, there's a UIL increase that's passed along, that the district's passed along. We also have an increase to our athletic and academic stipends, coaching stipends, and the cheerleading, honey bears, all of the different stipends. We have a small increase for all of those stipends. Of course, a support of our Police Department. We're also adding three portables, and we'll be paying those, leasing those. There are five-year lease, but they'll be leased to own. And then we do have some AEDs that are at the end of their life that need replacing. As we've done in the last few years, we have decision package items that are one-time cost to the budget. If those costs use fund balance, those are, are needed, hopefully in the past, when we've had to have, when we've offered decision package items, we've asked to use fund balance, haven't had to use as much as we've asked for, so that's always good. But we just, for, when you, if you use fund balance for one-time cost, it, it works fine. Your, your financial advisors and your rating agencies are okay, as long as they're one-time costs. So these are the items in this year's budget. The portable building one-time cost, this isn't the lease payment, but this is just what it costs to get those portables set up. There's some technology one-time items, again, those middle school access, safety access, some cameras, maintenance projects that are one-time, and then, of course, we'll need furniture for the new portables. This is a summary of the proposed general fund budget for next year. 84 million expenditures, I mean, revenue 85.8 in expenditures, which includes that, 910,000 of that is the one-time cost. I showed this spreadsheet. It's big, and it's, it's hard to read, but the, as you know, Boards adopt the budget on the functional level. So the Board sees that, they're familiar with that. When you see budget amendments that happen during the year, try to do those quarterly, those, the Board has to approve those, because the Board approves these, the budget by the instructional, by the function level. So if we change that and make change to that, the Board has to adopt, or has to approve that. The other budgets that will be adopted tonight are the Debt Service Budget, and the Debt Service is, of course, the money we pay to pay our, our bond payments, the money that we borrow when we have bonds. And so, as you can see, we have about $14 million in revenue. Again, we'll know that number could change when we actually do pass our tax rate. $12 million in expenditures, and so we'll have an excess, but again, that, that number can change. You have to have a fund balance in your debt service fund of a certain amount, because you have to make your debt service payments in August before your tax revenue comes in. And of course, our food service budget, which is adopted by the Board, is federal money, the majority of it, but that is 6 million in revenues and 5.7 approximately in expenditures. So with that, just some fund balance information that we like to show each year, and where that's going. And I'll be glad to answer any questions from the Board or from the public.
I have a quick question. You show one graph that shows property tax valuations going up, and then on page 23, it says that we expect $600,000 less. Is that because of some of those property that we were talking about that are?
On which? Is that on the PowerPoint?
Yeah, number 20, no, it was, yeah, it's on the page that you sent us.
Oh, in the den.
Local and intermediate revenue sources. 23 on the one you sent us.
And it says, I'm sorry.
Property tax revenue. 2015-16 was 12,700, and then?
Oh, on the debt service?
Yes. Could you explain that, that $600,000?
Right there?
No.
That's food service. Where's debt service?
The difference in that, the 47 million versus the 14 million, and in the 15-16 budget, we had bond refunding. And so when, all of the sale and the refunding expenses for that refunding have to be amended to the budget. So you will see, and if we do, we've done, we've done a refunding in 1617, depending on when that closes, you could see those large numbers. So that's, that's the difference in those large numbers of bond refundings.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Senator, go to that last, last, right there. Do you feel very comfortable with the fund balance? I know that there's a recommended percentage that we keep it at.
Yeah, and I, at our last, when the auditor did our last books, which is the 1415, he was very comfortable with that, two and a half to three months of operating. Yes.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Any questions for Ms. Callahan?
Mr. President, do these adoptions have to be done individually, or can they all be done at once?
We're doing one motion.
I think you.
One motion for both.
Yeah, you can do both.
As long as you stayed all in the motion, stayed all specifically.
I said, move to adopt 2016-2017 budget for general debt service and food service.
And the compensation package.
And the compensation.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve or adopt the 2016-17 general debt service, food service, including the BISD compensation package as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Senator. Thanks for your hard work on that.
Thank you, Sandra.
We're now going to move on to our consent agenda. And if any Board member wants to pull an item, so do now. If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve it all.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I'd like to remove, or vote separately on Consent Agenda B2, General Retail Merchandise and Services.
Okay, so we're going to, to pull item B2, keeping B1 in. We'll pull item B2 off the consent agenda.
Correct. I have conflict with vendors due to be, one of them being a customer. I won't be abstaining on that vote.
Okay.
B2.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion, item A, B1, C, D, E, F, and G at this time.
So, so moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Items A, B1, C, D, E, F, and G. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now go to item B2, where Trustee Moonshink will abstain. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item B2, to consider the approval for bids for general retail merchandise and services. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have one abstaining? Motion carries. Now, we are going to move on to our action items, and hear from Haney.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
President Allen, Board members, Mr. Murray. I would like to take a few minutes to present the turnaround plans for City Creek Elementary and Red Rock Elementary at this time. PTA requires that campuses with second-year IR status, in the spring semester, develop turnaround plans in case, which won't be our situation, if there is a third-year IR situation. So you develop the plans in the spring, the data comes back in the, in June. And so if a campus does go IR for the third year, then you're ready to start working with the plan that you've developed in the spring. So, you guys were presented in your Board packets, the plans for both campuses. The slide in front of you are the components of the turnaround plans. So I just want to kind of go over some of the brief information in each one of the components. So the root cause has been established, that it is the instructional skill level that our teachers have, with our large population of L students, special services students, and our high-poverty students, as well as the delivery, the effectiveness of the instruction, and the alignment of that instruction with our state standards. The turnaround initiatives in our plans are to build capacity with our leadership teams at each campus, as well as improve our teacher practices. We want to make sure that we are aligning our instruction and our assessments to meet the state standards, as well as, as we've talked about in some previous Board meetings. the state standards, as well as, as we've talked about in some previous board meetings, the writing program that we're bringing to the district to improve our writing practices. These initiatives are all in efforts to improve our student performance. The outcomes in our turnaround plans are to have a deeper understanding of our state standards, as well as our instructional delivery improved and meet the state standards. We want to utilize effective instructional methods for our English language learner students, our special needs students, and our students of high poverty. Processes and procedures in our turnaround plans will include increased the monitoring of our effective instruction, school-wide accountability for all grades, all subject areas, weekly updates with our D C S I, consistent and effective employment of our bilingual program, and the improved approach to the writing practices. The communication for the turnaround plan started this semester in the spring of two thousand sixteen. We started with community meetings, as well as a stakeholder survey, which was required by T E A. The survey was placed on the district website, as well as both campus websites. Communication went out from the campuses to inform stakeholders that the survey exists. They took that information, as well as a campus needs assessment on the critical success factors, took that information and developed a plan. The faculty was able to review the plan, then it was submitted to T E A. T E A submitted some recommendations and suggestions, we modified, and now we are here for board approval. If a campus goes into a third-year I R fall, they will take that plan and make sure that the vision and the plan are aligned. They will include parent and community review processes of the plan, as well as continue that ongoing support and communication with all stakeholders. It even goes into two thousand seventeen, so the spring, you would have to have stakeholder meetings and update your plan and update your implementation. The summer, when the data comes in, you would do an item analysis and look at your needs. And then the fall of two thousand seventeen, you would continue with your stakeholder meetings, data review interventions, and make sure that your vision is linked to the plan. So a lot of communication with our stakeholders on this plan. Organizational structures that are included in the plan, as I mentioned earlier, there's an increase of assistance from the district D C I S, D C I, D C S I. There is also a district cabinet-level liaison that will be working with both campuses, and our new teacher evaluation system. Capacity and resources for the turnaround plan includes, as mentioned in the budget, an increased stipend for our bilingual teachers, the intensive professional development for writing, phonics resources and the accompanying professional learning, monthly by literacy support, and the additional supporting resources, additional leveled readers, and training in law, non-linguistic graphic organizers. So that's the plan summaries. Do you guys have any questions on any of that information at this time?
I would just like to comment that there was an awful lot of good information that came out of those, out of those communications, and even though, I'm sure we won't have to integrate those plans, I hope that you do, bring some of that into our regular function. I think there was an awful lot of good...
Yes, sir. So if, when we are successful with our data this summer, we will be considered a formerly I R campus, and then you have to do a targeted improvement plan, so we can use this plan for that purpose.
It looks like a lot of work went into this.
Well, there's a lot of communication, a lot of partnerships, putting all of this together, so the team worked very, very hard.
We have some questions.
I promised they're real questions, but this is going to sound dumb, but we don't really quite know what's going on.
They don't know the acronym, all the acronym.
Improvement required. And so if, when state accountability comes in, if you don't meet standard, you are labeled improvement required.
Okay. That clears up a whole bunch of...
That makes so much more sense. Okay, wait, one more, one more question. So if it's a third-year I R, is, does that mean these schools have been lacking for three years?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Got it, okay. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Good questions.
Any other questions? At this time, I would like to recommend...
Thank you for all your hard work.
Pardon me?
Thank you for all your hard work. That took a lot of...
It was a team effort. Campus principals did most of the work. So at this time, I would like to recommend approval of the turnaround plans for Cedar Creek Elementary and Red Rock Elementary.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the Cedar Creek Elementary and Red Rock Elementary turnaround plans. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries. We're now going to move on, hear from Sandra again.
Sandra, while you're up there, I wanted to see if the, the students have any questions about the budget process or the budgets.
No, I'm...
I heard about the budget thing.
You got the whole...
I think I heard a question. We're glad.
Got it all down now?
The last meeting we were here, we didn't know any of the words she was saying, and so now we have a better understanding of it.
Wow, you have some, you have some interns.
That's why they asked to come back, they wanted to hear...
How many was it a year ago we all asked for a glossary of terms?
Yes.
That'd be great. We got a cautionary.
There are lots of acronyms.
Financial experts now, Sandra, they have no questions.
I never said that. I said I had a better understanding. Difference, Sandra.
I like that they knew there was an unlimited, that they didn't, that there's not an unlimited number of funds, and that they just didn't real, you know, didn't think, they always need this, this, but then they realized, well, there just isn't all the money in the world, so that was a great...
It'd be like if they showed up. I think that's great.
Right, good.
The first item I have is the financing of the portables that we talked about during the budget process. And what I, what I should say is those portables are going to Cedar Creek High School, one of them's going to be, it's going to be actually for the ag department, one at Blue Bonnet Middle, Blue Bonnet Elementary, and Cedar Creek Middle School. So that's where those three portables go. And the leasing is actually twofold, there's a tax-exempt portion and a taxable portion, and by law, the district's only allowed to do ten million dollars worth of tax-exempt municipal refunding, so our bonds count towards that. So our bond refunding, when it was all fine, said and done, was right at nine-point-eight some-odd million dollars. So we still had a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars of tax exempt that was available. So the three portables, we're two of them, we're going to be able to do as a tax exempt tax-exempt lease, and the other one's a taxable lease, so that's why it's two different items.
Does the money go to, what, pay taxes, the state?
It's, it's, it's like interest for those, actually, interest to the company that does the leasing. Yeah. Just like sometimes we'll do taxable bond sales, but that's because we are limited, but it's still worth it to do it on the, when it's so much, when there's such a saving. So the, the documents, Nancy will have those for, there's a couple of places to sign, but they're big, large documents, but they're just the leasing for the portables, they're five-year leases, we'll own those at the end. So just a recommendation that the board approve the financing of the tax-exempt municipal lease and the taxable municipal lease for the portables.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the financing of the tax-exempt municipal lease and tax municipal lease for the portable buildings. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And before we go to our last action item, any questions for our students? Because Hannah's over there, ready to go.
I think, quiet, we're good.
No, 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 it's, it's good. We want, we want to make sure that we, we get you guys some questions. Is there any, any part of the, this meeting that you have a question about, so far?
We cleared up one of them.
We cleared up the teachers don't make seventy thousand total.
Yeah. Because there was an increase, and I missed that word, and so I'm like doing the math, and like, how are teachers only going to make seven thousand a year?
Yeah, that came out the best.
Well, they were involved in the next item, they were involved in the process. Okay, we'll get to that, they'll have some, maybe ask them in person questions, we get to the, the next item.
Oh, yes. That was just me.
Were they, want to go to school next year?
Well, we, we can tell, they can do that. We've done that before, they were here before and done that. Maybe, for the people that don't know, we'd like to know, Jake, obviously a senior, he's a graduating senior, I know where he's going to school, maybe the people would like to know his future plans, and even though these are juniors, they, they...
Do you have to pretend you have a future?
They pretty, yes. Want to make sure you have a future, thank you.
You want me to just stay here and bugger for?
Yeah, no, it's, I don't know how much more I can take.
Don't bother.
What are you going to do next year, Jake?
Next year, I'm going, or, in the fall, I'm going to be attending Texas Tech University in Lubbock, Texas, and I'm going to be studying agriculture business and economics, and, wait, what?
We doggone Jake last meeting, he's going to...
Him, I know, he kept shooting the, the giga mags at me last, at last meeting at La Hacienda, but, um, yeah.
Did they intentionally place you in the midst of all those Aggies, is that what that was?
He was all alone in his little tech jersey.
I, I come from an all-Aggy family. My brother, he's about to graduate from A and M, my dad went to A and M, everybody went to A and M, except Patsy Trigg, you know, she went to U T. Always, I always bring her up every meeting, but I don't know why, but, you know. Just got to keep the name, got to keep the name out there, you know, you got the, you got the Media and Learning Center named after her, so that's a big, that's a big deal, and I know she really appreciates that, but, and I also plan on coming back to Bastrop and either working at the First National Bank, like my dad, or being a boot rep for Anderson Bean, I always thought that'd be the coolest job around, you know, running around with a big old trailer full of boots, all different kinds of skins and styles, so...
Sounds pretty good.
But, yeah, that, that pretty much sums up what I'll be doing, and I'm looking forward to, my brother, he's going to be going to law school pretty soon, so everybody knows him, he's the big politician in the family, so...
Jake, how long you been in the council?
Um, I've been in the council for four years, so, and I've really enjoyed the experience, and, you know, my, my input, I've, I've always seen results immediately, right after I put an input in, and I'm grateful of that, and any student, really, I've always seen immediate input, and the communication between superintendent Murray and pretty much any principal with Cedar Creek and Bastrop High School is always excellent, and, all right, guys, y'all just keep...
I'm not laughing at you, I promise, I'm not laughing at the whole, you know, the input gets hurt thing, because I've been ignored.
Only if I'm Murray.
Jake, I think that, I think that with your lineage, that B I S D is in your genetic material. We're glad that it's there, and we hope you don't forget us when you're gone.
Yeah, well, I'll make sure, you know, y'all are, y'all are a big part of the family, you know, really, well, not a big part of the fam, well, I guess, yeah, B I S D is part of the family. You know, I've had, I've had several, several teachers and whatnot that have always treated me like family, and I've had family that were teachers. So, you know, y'all are somewhat of my family, and I really appreciate y'all and what y'all do on the board and both of the schools, you know, sharing equality and stuff like that, so, yeah, so I'm going to give it to y'all.
Thanks, Jake.
I'll go first, because I tend to overshadow everyone.
Well, with that being stated, my plans right now, I'm a junior, this is my first year on Mr. Murray's council, looking forward to a second year in my last year as a senior. But my plans right now are to go to Texas A and M, gig 'em, gig 'em. And I want to get a communications major and just go into the business field, I really like, I'm a people kind of person, and interaction with other people is really something I strive for, and I think getting my communications major is the way to go. But I think before I even go to Texas A and M, I am thinking about joining the Air Force straight out of high school. It is something I've really wanted to do for a long time, and I really feel passionate about it, and I really feel like I'm going to commit to it. So, a college before a college, I'd like to think of it that way. Okay.
Are you sure?
overshadow us, though. Go for it.
Okay, I'm Hannah Thompson, and, yep, that was me. This is my third year on the council, I'm a junior. I, I plan on attending either A and M or Tech, basically depending on who gives me the most money. Yeah. I want to go into athletic training. A and M offer, both A and M and Tech offer a five-year program, which is brand-new to the state of Texas, and I'm hoping to start legacies in either one of those. Again, it's whoever gives me the most money. I don't mind being eight hours away. I mean, I, depending on how fast you drive. I mean, I love you, Mr. Murray, but we need our space.
If you need your space.
Yes, yes, I need my space. That's what she meant.
If it makes you feel better, you get my sister-in-law the year after I leave. That's all I've got right now, I, I, I'll think of something eventually. It's been an honor to serve on this council, no matter how many times I've tried to get myself kicked off of board meeting duty, and I've insulted a lot of people to try and do that. Everybody laugh, because we all know it's true. Shout out to...
What are your summer plans?
I'm actually working all summer, so...
That's good, good.
That's great.
What are my summer plans? I'm applying for a lot of scholarships and getting college-ready applications, and hopefully getting my driver's license, so. My dad wants me to learn standards, so it's going to be fun. Go for it.
Well, I either, for my summer plans, right now, I'm just kind of getting ready for college, and then I've also thought about going back to the Texas Boot Company here in Bastrop and continue working. I worked there before, and I absolutely enjoyed it, and just got one of the board members a job there, Jared Smith, so...
Oh, one of our council members?
Yeah, he's, he put me on, and he put Chief Yarborough down there as a reference as well, so, you know, I think, I think his was better than mine, but, you know...
He needs to go down there and buy some boots, then.
I know, yeah. I don't think Jared's going to give you a discount, but you never know, you know.
All right, I think we'll hear from our students again. Sandra, let you get up and talk about our item there.
Yes, our food service management bid, we talked, we talked about that a few times in the prior months, and it's been a long process, of course, as you know, and we've talked about, we had to go out for bid because of the new USDA rules and the T D A rules as far as the process that we did the last time, so many districts had to go out for an R F P, so we did that process. It was a very kind of stringent process with T D A, they're very strict and have very specific guidelines. So it was a big process with Mr. Murray, Barry, myself, Chief Yarborough, and Carol Barron, who works with our proposal and did a great job. So we had four companies that actually turned in some, you know, submitted proposals, and we had a, as Mr. Murray said, our student group, we brought back two finalists, and they gave presentations, and our students, we had some high school students and actually middle school students that came, and they gave great input, and they had great support. So with that, our recommendation for our new food service management company is Southwest Food Service Excellence, and I, I would be remiss if I did not say thank you to Chartwells for the three years that they've served the district, and so it's, that's our recommendation. Any questions? The, the information is in your packet, we also included the student survey and in our, our documentation as far as our, as we go through the bids and, and give the scores, so...
I'm making a motion to approve food service management services to Southwest.
Southwest Food Service Excellence.
Thank you. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that the food services be given to Southwest Food Services Service Excellence. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries.
Can there be a round of applause?
That's the one she liked.
I wrote S F P before she even talked.
Thank you for not voting on that, Hannah.
Oh, no, she did, I never...
I did. Oh, yeah.
Say about that, anything good?
No, no, we appreciate it, and we appreciate all the, all the hard work that was done with the, and again, I want to echo what Sandra said, that we, we appreciate the, the work and the service provided by Chartwells for the last three years as well.
Thank you, Chartwells, we really appreciate you guys. Again, and congratulations to Southwest Food Service, we expect big things, and we look forward to getting that. So on future items, we don't have anything, I, I did get a call, briefly discussed, discussed it with trustee Moonchink, got a call from the mayor today, and we're, we're talking a little bit, and he said that his city council wanted to challenge the school board to some kind of athletic challenge, to be, to be named at a later date.
Please, I would love to watch this happen.
The first thing I said is, you think you're better than us, right? So I said, you're, you're not. And, so I, I actually accepted the challenge when we have the board, sorry, guys.
You accepted the challenge?
But that, this is, this is for a later, a later date, we don't really know what it is. We could, it could be bowling, it could be, it could be dodgeball, I don't know.
Tackle football.
You know, Mr. Murray, I think if, and on how physical this, this challenge is, maybe we could have Hannah and Jake be our coaches, I think, Kristen, you're going into the... That's a good chance.
But you can't die. Yeah, no, dying's dying forbidden, but if you get close on there.
It's a rule, you're not allowed to die.
We'll keep everybody posted on that, I, I really, I think he's just trying to have some fun, so, and keep us both engaged as two taxing entities, so, I told him, whatever you want to do, we, we, we'll still beat you at whatever you want to do.
Whatever.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I really want to see this, huh?
He did say one-
Do you have a memorial and like something?
He said one thing that I'll go ahead and say, he said, "It won't be fair if you let Mr. Murray play."
Yeah, I mean, he is a little bit slow.
Now, I'm, you know, I don't want, I don't want to drag that out or anything, but.
And I think they actually meant the other way.
Did you give credit, because she was worse?
I got a good rebuttal.
You helped me, you helped him.
So anyway, I'll keep everybody posted on that, it should be fun, whatever it is, and it'll be later, and we'll, we'll make sure that everybody agrees to it, and nobody gets hurt or anything like that.
I'll be on standby, I just want to watch that.
Yeah, we got, we got Hannah if we need her.
Well, the bubble wrap, that would be nice.
If we can bubble wrap all of you, you could cream our rest.
Can we adjourn the meeting?
Please.
I want to thank you all for your attendance tonight, it's been a long meeting, but it was a very rewarding meeting, rewarding meeting in the beginning, we got a lot of business done, but we also got to a lot, to see a lot of our students and their successes, so we really appreciate that. Somebody want to move for adjournment?
So moved.